The Russian presence in the United Nations. But I wonder if the Russian presence in the United Nations has ever been legitimate. I wonder if ever this whole, this assembly voted in accordance with paragraph two of article four on admission of the Russian Federation to the United Nations, either in December nineteen ninety-one or in January nineteen ninety-two or wherever thereafter. I want to ask the delegates whose countries voted for admission of the Russian delegation to the United Nations to raise their hand to confirm that Russia was admitted to the United Nations according to the Charter. Please, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please raise your hand if your country voted in the formal session of the General Assembly in reply to the letter by President Yeltsin dated December twenty-four nineteen ninety-one, when he told the United Nations that Russia would like to be a continiator state of the demolished Soviet Union. Anyone? Shall I put my glasses if my vision fails me and I don't see any hand raised? Any country, anyone voted for Russian membership? I leave you with that and think about it when you listen to the Russian delegate.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished colleagues. In recent days, the Ukrainian issue has made headlines, global headlines, and has now been given pride of place at the UN Security Council and now the General Assembly. At the same time, Russian actions are being distorted and thwarted, and there is the number of incredible fakes is staggering with the use with media outlets and social networks proliferating these lies. For this reason, today I wish to focus on the real reasons for the crisis that has emerged and its possible consequences. I wish to emphasize the following: The root for the current crisis lies in the actions of Ukraine itself. For many years, it sabotaged and flouted its direct obligations under the Minsk package of measures. Just recently, very recently, there was a hope that in Kiev they would reconsider and that they would indeed comply with what they signed on to back in 2015. For that, first and foremost, what was necessary was direct dialogue as set out in the document between Donetsk and Lugansk. However, the latest confirmation from the senior leadership of the country was that Ukraine was unwilling to engage in this dialogue and they took unwilling to take steps to grant special status to Donbass and as set out in the Minsk agreements, and this was actively supported by the Western patrons of Kiev. And this definitively persuaded us of the fact that we no longer have a right to allow the residents of Donbass to suffer any further. Insofar as Ukrainian provocations against the people of Donbass in February did not end, in fact, they escalated. The leadership of DPR and LPR turned to us with a request to deliver military support in line with bilateral agreements on cooperation, which were arrived at with their recognition concurrently with recognition. And this was a logical step to the ongoing, the persistent aggressive actions undertaken by the Ukrainian regime. The Ukrainian authorities, which has of late been actively armed and incited by a number of states, were under the misconception that with the indulgence of Western patrons and sponsors, they would be able to address the issues in Donbass militarily. It is difficult otherwise. It would be difficult to explain the ongoing intensification of shelling and sabotage acts on the territory of the republics which I mentioned. The people of Donbass and Lugansk continued to have to take shelter in basements. There was a flood of refugees entering the Russian Federation, and yet still, the nature of the Ukrainian Armed Forces operation did not change. And yet, Western partners did not wish, turned a blind eye to this, and they merely echoed Ukrainian tall tales about the allegations that Donbass people were shelling on themselves. The worsening suffering of the residents of Donbass is something that has left Western sponsors unmoved in recent years. This discussion at the Security Council, General Assembly, there was no empathy whatsoever, no compassion for the people of Donbass and Lugansk. It seems that these four million people simply don't exist for them. And as a result, the ongoing threats targeting the people of LPR and DPR, given the lack of prospects for addressing the problems in the area under the Minsk operations due to the failure to fulfill them, and the Russian president took a decision for a special military operation to be carried out in Donbass. Occupation of Ukraine is not part of this, of these plans. The goal of the special operation is to protect the people who for eight years were subject to torment and genocide by the Kiev regime. To that end, there is a need to demilitarize and denazify Ukraine. We further will strive to hold accountable those who carried out countless brutal crimes against the people, the residents, including residents of the Russian Federation. This decision was taken in line with Article fifty-one of the United Nations Charter with a sanction of the Federation Council of the Russian Federation pursuant of the Agreement on Friendship and Cooperation with DPR and LPR. I wish to recall further that the principle sovereignty and territorial integrity of states is something which we are being accused of breaching vis-à-vis Ukraine. The Declaration of Principles of International Law on Friendly Relations Between Peoples was adopted in nineteen seventy, and it needs to be unstintingly complied with with respect to states, I quote, “conducting themselves in compliance with the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples as described above and thus possessed of a government representing the whole people, belonging to the territory without distinction as to race, creed, or color.” End of quote. Today’s government of Ukraine is no such government. Moreover, during the special military operation, Russia has been exercising its right to self-defense from a regime that has been striving to gain access to nuclear weapons. The president of Ukraine explicitly stated this on eighteen February during the Munich Conference. And this, I would recall, this statement that he delivered was met with applause by the participants of this conference. At the same time, Ukraine is seeking membership in NATO where there is Article five in effect and has territorial claims to the Russian Federation. Hence, by leveraging Article fifty-one of the UN Charter, not only is Russia protecting itself from the nationalist threat, but Russia is also seeking to uphold the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter on the soil of Donbass and Ukraine, ensuring that the main goal of the United Nations be upheld, namely to prevent succeeding generations from a scourge of war. Unfortunately, it behooves us to note the very negative role played in all of this by Western colleagues led by the United States. Instead of compelling Kiev to comply with its obligations, instead, they are merely inciting Kiev, egging it on, repeating the senseless mantra that their obligations of the Minsk agreements are not being complied with the Russian Federation, which I should like to recall and emphasize, Russian Federation is not a party to it. Moreover, our Western colleagues have shamelessly inundated the country with weapons, have sent to the country instructors and effectively incited Ukrainians who are facing a one hundred twenty thousand-strong military contingent prompted them to engage in armed provocation against the Donbass. This thereby, the Western countries have created a bubble that cannot but pop. Distinguished colleagues, discussing today, in this discussion, it behooves us to note that back in two thousand and eight, Russian President, the NATO Bucharest Council cautioned that members of NATO should think three times before proudly stating that Ukraine and Georgia will join NATO. And this was portrayed as some kind of a great compromise, which was immediately met with action plans undertaken in Ukraine and Georgia to join the alliance. At the same time, in two thousand and fourteen, there was a brutal anti-constitutional coup which took place in Kiev, as a result of which nationalists and radicals seized power. And their policy was to create an anti-Russia in Ukraine and to ensure that it join NATO. And I will revisit that. For us, Ukraine joining NATO is a red line. First and foremost, from the military strategic level, the deployment of NATO infrastructure in that country would compel us to adopt measures in response, and this has placed us at the verge of conflict. For this reason, in December twenty twenty-one, we proposed that agreements be arrived at with the US and NATO for security assurances to be provided to the Russian Federation. However, our extended hand was unceremoniously rebuffed by Americans and NATO representatives. It was proposed that we continue to discuss secondary issues without consideration of our concerns. Moreover, the question was not addressed as to the how the freedom of choosing alliances as set out in the OSCE aligns with the principles of indivisibility of security, which is of great importance to us. Probably many of you wonder what should be done now and what can, role can the United Nations play in addressing the Ukrainian crisis? We believe that the UN can and should play its role, help to bring the stakeholders’ positions closely together and to eradicate the causes of conflict. The key role here, according to the Charter, should be played by and falls allies with the Security Council. However, attempts to calmly discuss this issue is something our partners did not deign to undertake. For this reason, the Russian Federation on twenty-five February voted against the anti-Russian, anti-Ukrainian draft resolution of the Security Council. It is anti-Russian, this document. There is no need to explain why. It suffice to have a cursory glance at the document. Why is it anti-Ukrainian, the document? Because this document, beyond any doubt, is inconsistent with the root interests of the Ukrainian people insofar as it is an attempt to salvage and to cement in Ukraine those authorities who brought the country to the brink of tragedy. And this tragedy has been ongoing for eight years now. The main reason for our negative vote was not what was in the draft, but what was not included in the draft. If the sponsors were to attempt to make it even remotely balanced, then they would not have left out issues that need to be addressed in the context of the Ukrainian issue. Specifically, what was unaddressed was the way that the anti-constitutional coup in Ukraine, in Kiev, in February twenty fourteen resulted in Maidan Khunta seizing power and using it against the residents, shelling civilian areas with artillery pieces and multiple rocket launchers and raining bombs on the people of Donbass and Lugansk. What was unaddressed was how the Ukrainian authorities, with the tolerance and indulgence of Western sponsors, consistently and cynically shirked their obligations to implement the Minsk agreement. At the same time, at the line of contact, Ukrainian death squads, first and foremost comprised of neo-Nazi radical elements, methodically, day after day, shelled the residential areas of DPR and LPR, killing women, children, the elderly. This is ongoing today. How can we fail to mention the fact that the Ukrainian nationalists have been perpetrating crimes for all these eight years? The protesters against Maidan and Nadesa were burned alive. The peaceful protesters and the Maidan were shot out, killed by snipers. The investigation into these tragedies by the Maidan regime was deliberately swept under the rug. At the same time, the perpetrators in the Nadesa tragedy are well-known. They are flaunting their presence. And an alternative investigation into the reasons, into the acknowledgement by these snipers, unambiguously emphasizes that the slaughter on Independence Square was a provocation by the leaders of Maidan. We specifically last year held an informal Security Council Aria formal meeting on this issue in order to provide colleagues at the Security Council more information about this. However, in response, at best, we heard from Western sponsors merely hackneyed cliches about Russian propaganda. What kind of a text resolution on Ukraine can there be in the above-mentioned circumstances? There is a need to ensure that the text, there was a need for the text to have a frank assessment of the role in inflating the Ukrainian crisis played by Western colleagues, who not only were present in the Minsk negotiations, but effectively gave Kiev carte blanche to carry out any actions or steps that would be unthinkable for any civilized states. With tales being spun about the triumph of democracy in Ukraine, the Maidan authorities and nationalists engaged in, with impunity, murdering political opponents, persecuting opposition, shuttering opposition television outlets, where there could be some relatively objective information provided. Six of those television channels were shuttered under Zelensky alone. And how could we fail to mention the fact that the country was flooded with weapons, which were then turned on peaceful civilians in Donbass? The responsibility for what is taking place right now lies at the feet of the current Ukrainian leadership as well as our Western colleagues. Today, we wish to emphasize that this has been inflated by the lies, deceit, misinformation from the Ukrainian Armed Forces and the nationalist Western media outlets increasingly shamelessly are portraying our military operation as a result, as a negative consequence. We constantly hear lies, fakes about indiscriminate shelling of Ukrainian cities, hospitals, schools, kindergartens. The Russian army does not pose a threat to the civilians of Ukraine, is not shelling civilian areas in areas and cities where Russian Armed Forces have taken control. And these areas are seeing citizens living their lives normally, basic infrastructure, transportation, local infrastructure, and law and order is being upheld. And this includes the electrical station, the power plant, which is jointly patrolled by Russian representatives and the special Ukrainian police who are present in the area. The Chernobyl plant is also operating normally. The threat to the residents of Ukraine presently is posed by Ukrainian nationalists who have effectively taken hostage the residents of Ukraine, and they are using them, they are hiding themselves behind them and using them as human shields. There is abundant evidence from ordinary Ukrainians that nationalists, despite their protests, have been deploying heavy equipment and multiple rocket launchers in residential areas. This is an egregious violation of international humanitarian law, which needs to be duly condemned. Effectively, this is the same tactic that is being used by ISIL terrorists. All of the responsibility for the possible repercussions lies at the feet of the Maidan regime. The residents of Ukraine are also threatened by the unfettered, uncontrolled radical elements giving to all of those who wish, including criminals who have specifically been released from prison. They are now receiving weapons, and the looters and moraders and criminals are now using them to target civilians. There is sufficient and abundance of evidence of this from residents of Kiev and other cities. This demonstrates the recklessness of Ukraine authorities vis-à-vis their women. Just now, we received a letter from the Ukrainian Human Rights Civic Organization, the Social Policy and Social Protection Institute, the name of it is not, for eight years, this body has been informing international structures about how the neo-Nazism was born and proliferated in Ukraine and how it has been and continues to be upheld at the state level. I briefly quote today, “The opiate of the recklessness and lawlessness of neo-Nazis in Ukraine was that condemned criminals have been released from prison. They have carried out grave crimes, murders, etc. Only in Kiev, those who are willing receive twenty-five thousand machine guns without any documentation, killings, looting, crime is ongoing. Those so-called territorial defenders of Ukraine, shot at a car, killing parents and a girl, a young girl. Two children are in hospital critically wounded. The former acting president, following the unconstitutional coup in February twenty fourteen, Trochinov, called on all citizens who are not indifferent to slaughter Russians throughout the territory of the country. And this, despite the fact that the most recent document for Ukraine in twenty nineteen sets out that sixteen, almost seventeen percent, and actually far more people are Russian there. Now, against the Russian Federation, in social networks, an information war has been unleashed, insofar as evidence of destruction of civilian infrastructure by Russian military does not exist. Ukrainian attacks and accidental attacks bear out the fact that Ukrainian nationalists are carrying out this violence. Social networks have training manuals about how to create fakes to taint our military operation throughout Ukrainian social networks. There are one point two million such pieces of fake news. And the correspondence that was read out by the Ukrainian ambassador, that conversation that was read out is also a part of these facts and these fakes. This is well-known. We also did not support the draft resolution for this issue to move from the Security Council and be addressed by the General Assembly Special Session today. We were guided by the fact that this measure proposes that we register that the Security Council failed to comply, to uphold its main responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security. And at the same time, there was not even a hint at an attempt to find a constructive solution at the Security Council. Attempts to circumvent the position of the Russian Federation, to disregard the position of the Russian Federation, runs counter to the very bedrock of the United Nations. There is a need to find common ground, regardless of our Western partners’ attempts to avoid this, including when they disregarded our legitimate concerns in connection with NATO policy and Western countries’ breach of the core principles of the OSCE on indivisibility of security. To conclude, Mr. President, I wish to state that the Russian Federation did not begin these hostilities. The hostilities were unleashed by Ukraine against its own residents, the residents of Donbass and all of those who are dissenters. Russia is seeking to end this war. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states. North Macedonia, Montenegro, Albania, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Iceland, Norway, Republic of Moldova, Georgia, San Marino, Andorra, Monaco, and Liechtenstein align themselves with this statement. Mr. President, I want to thank you for convening us here today and for the Secretary-General to be here and for all of you colleagues being here. It’s very important that the facts are heard and fully understood and that this body is able to take the appropriate decisions after the fact that the Security Council, thanks to the veto by one country alone, stopped this council from taking that decision. Let me start by expressing the European Union’s full solidarity and support to Ukraine and its people, who are courageously fighting an unprovoked and unjustified military aggression from Russia. Since our meeting here in the General Assembly last week, the situation has dramatically escalated, despite tireless diplomatic efforts, including at the highest level. Russia has decided to turn its back to peace, to the rules-based international order as defined interalien in the UN Charter, to diplomacy and to the international community. Russia’s military attack against Ukraine has already caused an alarming number of deaths, injured, internally displaced, and refugees. We condemn in the strongest possible terms the unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by armed forces of the Russian Federation in violation of Ukraine’s independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity. We also condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine. And we call on both Russia and Belarus to abide by their international obligations. We’re also alarmed by Russia’s racing of the nuclear alert level. We call on Russia to de-escalate and to immediately return to the previous alert level of its nuclear arsenal and to avoid any actions that could risk the safety or security of the nuclear power plants in Ukraine, a non-nuclear weapon state under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty. Russia bears full responsibility for this aggression and the resulting destruction and loss of life. We demand from Russia to cease its military operations immediately and unconditionally and to withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. We further call on Russia to engage in earnest in dialogue with a view to political and diplomatic solution. Russia’s actions grossly violate international law and are in clear breach of the UN Charter and the OSCE Helsinki Final Act, as well as Russia’s specific commitments to respect Ukraine’s sovereignty and territorial integrity under the Budapest Memorandum of nineteen ninety-four. This is arguably the biggest aggression in Europe since the end of the Second World War. It follows similar Russian aggression against its neighbors in two thousand and eight and two thousand and fourteen. We underscore our firm support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Georgia and of the Republic of Moldova, and we are closely monitoring the situation in the region. This assembly has a responsibility immediately and effectively to acknowledge and address Russia’s actions. Failing to do so will erode trust through the rules-based global order with the UN at its core and the UN Charter itself. It would send the wrong message to perpetrators of such aggression and aggravate similar risks to other UN member states in the region and beyond. We stand firmly by Ukraine and its people. We deplore the loss of life and human suffering. This is a dire humanitarian catastrophe, and humanitarian needs are rapidly increasing. With the toll of IDPs and refugees rising, humanitarian support is a priority in the wider package of EU support offered to Ukraine in these trying days. The UN’s member states are providing urgently needed humanitarian assistance to the Ukrainian population. Ukraine has activated the Union’s civil protection mechanism and is receiving urgently needed supplies from EU member states. In addition, the Republic of Moldova, to which more than sixty thousand Ukrainians have fled, has requested and received EU humanitarian support in dealing with the human catastrophe caused deliberately by the Russian Federation’s invasion of Ukraine. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to respect international law, including international humanitarian law. Civilians and civilian infrastructures must be protected and humanitarian access should be secured. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to allow safe and unhindered humanitarian access and stop their disinformation campaign and cyber attacks. We strongly condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine and call on it to immediately stop action and to abide by its international obligations. We call our unwavering support for the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. And we call on all UN members not to recognize the two self-proclaimed separatist entities. The EU has reacted swiftly and decisively to Russia’s recognition of Ukraine’s self-proclaimed separatist entities and the invasion of Ukraine by adopting restrictive measures. We intend to take such measures against Belarus. Mr. President, let us be clear on this. We firmly believe that the use of force and coercion to change borders has no place in the twenty-first century. the 21st century. Let us recall that the UN Charter prohibits both the threat and the use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state, or in any other manner inconsistent with the purposes of the United Nations. Tensions and conflict should be resolved through dialogue and diplomacy. The EU, together with like-minded partners, have been united in making unprecedented efforts to achieve a diplomatic solution. But Russia has not reciprocated these efforts and instead opted unilaterally for a grave and premeditated escalation. With this one-sided step, Russia is further isolating itself. We are today at a crucial and historical moment. Too many times in the past, the international community has been blind or too slow in front of unfolding tragedies. Entire generations in many places around the world, many of you representing them, have paid and are still paying the price of inaction. We cannot make the same mistake again. We have to take action. After Russia's veto in the Security Council last week, the General Assembly has the responsibility to send a strong and united message on the need for Russia to immediately and unconditionally cease its military operations, withdraw its troops, and opt for genuine dialogue. We call on Russia to avoid, in particular, any action that places the safety and security of Ukraine's nuclear and radioactive waste installations at risk. The people of Ukraine and the whole world are watching us and counting on us, and will judge us on the decisions that we will take here in this special emergency session. And it's our duty and responsibility for all of us to do our utmost to defend the UN Charter and the international order. We therefore hope that this assembly will massively support the resolution tabled by Ukraine and its partners. The EU and its member states will continue to do their utmost to protect the integrity of the rules-based international system, which is key to our collective security, and we call on all UN member states to do the same. On our side, we will continue to stand by Ukraine, support its democratically elected institutions and representatives and its people, including through additional political, financial, humanitarian, and logistical support. I thank you very much, colleagues. I thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the European Union. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Denmark on behalf of the Nordic Baltic countries.
I have the honor to speak on behalf of the eight Nordic Baltic countries: Estonia, Finland, Iceland, Latvia, Lithuania, Norway, Sweden, and my own country Denmark. Mr. President, on the night of 24th February, the Russian leadership decided to attack Ukraine. Let me be clear: we condemn, in the strongest terms possible, the invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. People around the world are watching with horror the tragedy unfolding in Ukraine. A member state of this organization, a member of this community of nations, we are struck with a profound sense of injustice and a profound sympathy with the Ukrainian people who are fighting for their country, their cities, their homes, their families, their lives, their freedom, and their future. The Russian leadership's aggression and brutal armed attack is in clear violation of Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders. The Russian leadership's actions gravely violate international law and the principles of the UN Charter. They are an attack on this organization, and this cannot stand. Last week, the Russian leadership decided it would erase Ukraine's right to determine its own future. This cannot stand. Mr. President, Russia counted on the world to remain silent, but we are acting. And on this day, and until peace prevails and every Ukrainian can safely return to their homes, we stand with Ukraine. The devastating consequences of this aggression, not only for Europe but globally, cannot be overstated. Russian aggression against Ukraine will have global and long-term negative consequences, challenging the rules-based international order if we let it go unanswered. In the time ahead, we fear increased suffering, with potentially large number of casualties and extensive destruction of civilian infrastructure. We see fighting unfolding in and around urban areas, and we are deeply concerned about the long-term cumulative and protracted harm to the civilian population. Mr. President, we will continue to look at every single instrument in our toolbox as a matter of urgency. Sanctions have already been enacted to cripple Putin's ability to finance this war machine. And likewise, the role of the Lukashenko regime in Belarus in enabling the attack on Ukraine also demands a firm response. Nordic Baltic countries have been delivering financial, humanitarian, and military assistance to the people of Ukraine, and many of our partners and friends around the globe have joined us. Every nation must look at how to further support Ukraine. Mr. President, during the days we have watched with horror broadcasted images of families separated, children sheltering in the safety of the Kiev subway system, kindergartens destroyed by Russian ordinances, and the ruins of bombarded residential buildings in the center of the capital of Ukraine, we are outraged by indiscriminate attacks on civilians in this unlawful and immoral war of conquest that serves no purpose and no principle but the naked quest for power and territory. This cannot stand. Russia must respect international humanitarian law and human rights law. Full and unhindered humanitarian access must be guaranteed. Civilians must be protected. We call on Russia to stop this senseless war, and we echo the plea of the Secretary General. We demand an immediate ceasefire, and we urge Russia to withdraw all its forces from Ukraine and return genuinely to the path of dialogue and negotiation. Mr. President, let me be clear: every civilian death, every war crime will be recorded, and we will ensure that the perpetrators of these heinous crimes are held accountable and brought to justice. History has its eyes on us. Every legal avenue available will be used to hold the aggressor to account. Ukraine has sent a request to the International Court of Justice on Russia's erroneous and absurd allegations of genocide in Ukraine, which the Russian Federation has cynically used as a false pretext for its invasion. The International Criminal Court's prosecutor has also noted that he is monitoring Russia's invasion of Ukraine and has jurisdiction to prosecute war crimes and crimes against humanity. The prosecutor's office may and will exercise its jurisdiction over and investigate any act of genocide, crimes against humanity, or war crime committed within the territory of Ukraine, as Ukraine has accepted the court's jurisdiction. We fully support the ICC's monitoring of the situation. Colleagues, the rules-based international order, which governs how states interact with one another, was put in place drawing from the horrible lessons of two world wars, promising one another that future generations would be saved from the scourge of war. The attack on Ukraine, the Russian invasion of Ukraine, is a direct assault on the principles and purposes of the UN Charter. This cannot stand. The matter is now in the hands of the General Assembly, where one veto cannot overrule the UN membership, where the power and legitimacy is manifested in numbers. Russia's shameful use of the veto on a matter it bears full responsibility for is completely unacceptable. As a permanent member of the Security Council, Russia has a special responsibility for maintaining peace and security, not to violate the very principles of the UN Charter. The latest meetings of the council demonstrated the need for reform. It demonstrated who had the firmness and valor to defend the UN Charter. No country can grow and thrive in isolation. Russia knows this. The General Assembly has the power to send a firm message to Putin, and what we say today and how we vote on the resolution presented will make a difference on the ground in Ukraine and to the Ukrainian people. They will be watching us, hoping that the world will come in on the side of the UN Charter and our promise of never again. Colleagues, Russia's unlawful and brutal armed attack on Ukraine will affect and impact everyone. And if we do not join our forces to turn back this tide today, we will be even less equipped to deal with similar crises and crimes in the future, wherever, on whichever continent they occur. Over the last week, we have heard powerful statements from representatives of every continent on this planet, from Africa to Asia, from Europe to the Americas, that Russia's behavior towards a fellow member of the United Nations cannot stand, and we will hear more today. And to those who still refer to two parties to a conflict, we echo the words of a protester who had written on her sign: "If Russia stops fighting, there will be no more war. If Ukrainians stop fighting, there will be no more Ukraine." That is the simple reality before us. That is the simple truth. The world will hold Russia and Belarus accountable for their actions, Russia as the main aggressor, Belarus as the enabler. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Denmark. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of France.
Mr. President, Russia, day by day, is continuing its work of destruction in Ukraine. And on top of these brutal and criminal acts, we see a dangerous rhetoric which is further stoking tension. Russia is conducting this armed aggression in violation of the most fundamental principles of the United Nations Charter, which all members of this assembly have the obligation to respect. On Friday, it was the only one to oppose a Security Council resolution co-sponsored by 82 states. The General Assembly today has a historic responsibility, that of relaying loudly and robustly the voice of citizens who, across all continents, including in Russia, are asking for the immediate cessation of this war and for the withdrawal of the Russian army from Ukrainian territory. France supports the efforts underway within this assembly to prepare a resolution demanding that Russia put an end to its aggression and respect the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. We call for all members of this assembly to vote in favor of this text. Over and above Ukraine, it is an issue of defending the Charter and the very reason for the existence of the United Nations. Let's be clear about this. Faced with the armed aggression against a people, faced with the civilian victims increasing in number every day, faced with the outflows of those who are forced to seek refuge, no one can avert their gaze. Abstention is not an option. Abstaining is to agree that might is right. We call upon all member states to vote in favor of the primacy of law over force. Mr. President, the implication of this emergency special session does not mean that the Security Council is refusing to exercise its responsibilities. The council will be meeting this afternoon to discuss the humanitarian situation in Ukraine. France, together with Mexico, will be tabling a draft resolution in order to guarantee the protection of civilians and safe and unhindered humanitarian access in order to respond to the urgent needs of the Ukrainian population. France and its partners in the European Union stand firmly, shoulder to shoulder, with the Ukrainian people. The European Union has already announced 90 million euros of humanitarian aid. France will also play its part. With our partners, France is mobilized to ensure that the international response is able to confront the aggression committed by Russia. The European Union, and France is president for the first six months of this year, has adopted measures to block access of the Russian Central Bank to its reserves. We've also announced the funding of defensive equipment for Ukraine. Mr. President, France salutes the courage being shown by the people of Ukraine. We call upon this assembly to express to them without delay our support through the adoption of a resolution. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of France. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom.
Mr. Secretary General, Mr. President, colleagues. On Friday, 81 member states supported a resolution in the Security Council to stop the war in Ukraine. Russia was completely isolated in opposing that resolution. Today, we gather in the General Assembly to stand against Russia's illegal attack on Ukraine and its assault on the principles of the UN Charter. The facts are clear. Russia has invaded Ukraine without provocation and without justification. Russia has rained missiles and rockets down on Kyiv, Kharkiv, Odessa, and other cities. The brave men and women of Ukraine are enduring the barrage and have held their cities from Russian invaders. They are fighting for their country, for their continued future as a free and independent nation. But the humanitarian consequences are already immense. We hear of babies born in air raid shelters, children with bomb craters in their kindergartens, and today, news of the shelling of residential areas in Kharkiv. These are indiscriminate attacks on Ukrainian civilians. Seven million Ukrainians are displaced. In short, the scourge of war that our United Nations was created to prevent has been unleashed by Russia on Ukraine. The international response to Russia's aggression has been united and swift. Around the world and here in this building, we must stand together to defend the rules and enforce the accountability that we have built together. If we do not stand up for them now, then the safety of every nation's borders and independence are at risk. That is why we also condemn Belarusian support for Russia's invasion of Ukraine. As the Secretary General said last week, Russia's actions are violations of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and conflict directly with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. And as he said today, the only answer is peace. So our message today is simple. We offer our unequivocal support for Ukraine and the Ukrainian people. We call on President Putin to stop this senseless war, and we urge all fellow members of the United Nations to speak up for Ukraine and to defend the Charter. Slava Ukraini! Slava Ukraini!
Ich danke den distinguierten Vertretern der Vereinigten Kingdoms. Ich gebe jetzt den Platz dem distinguierten Vertreter der Georgiener Union.
Danke, Herr Präsident. Meine Delegation aligniert sich mit dem Statement, das vom Vertreter der Europäischen Union gemacht wurde. Und in meiner nationalen Kapazität möchte ich den folgenden Kommentar hinzufügen. Excellences! Wir haben heute in einer Sitzung des Unfallfalls gesammelt, weil die Sicherheitskonsulatur wieder einmal fehlte, als ein Künder des Friedens und Sicherheitsgesetzes nicht aktiv war. Also ist es nun unsere Aufgabe, die Allgemeine Plenarsitzung, wo wir alle gleichreiche Rechte haben, zu wählen, um aufzustehen und sicherzustellen, dass die Vereinten Nationen auf das Ziel, das sie geschaffen haben, erfüllen. Das Einsatz der Armee von Mitgliedern der UN gegen Souveränität, Territorialintegrität oder politische Unabhängigkeit anderer Mitgliedstaaten verletzt Art. 2.4 des UN Charter und ist ein Akt von Aggression, wie definiert wird von der Resolution 3314 dieses eigenen Baugesetzes, die von consensus adoptiert wurde. Was wir in der Ukraine sehen, ist ein Akt von Aggression auf der Seite Russlands, und wir bedenken es. In der letzten Woche habe ich von diesem sehr großen Raum über Russlands Verhalten gegen seine Nachbarn gesprochen. Russlands vollständiges militärisches Aggression gegen mein Land sollte als Aufgeräusch für alle servieren. Aber leider ist es nicht möglich, die ähnliche Szene ein paar Jahre später in der Ukraine zu verhindern. Nicht um mich selbst zu wiederholen, lassen Sie mich nur sagen, dass wir in Georgiener wissen, was der Preis der Kriege ist. Wir wissen, welche katastrophalen Folgen dies hat. Und das sind Menschen, leere Bürgerkinder, Frauen und Kinder, die den höchsten Preis bezahlt haben. Es ist zerstörerisch nicht nur für diejenigen, die es erlebt haben, sondern es geht auch auf Generationen herunter. Lassen Sie mich klar sein. Grundprinzipien, die im UN Charter enthalten sind, die Helsinki Final Act, der Charter Paris für Neue Europa und die Verpflichtungen, die unter dem Budapest Memorandum getroffen wurden, sind nicht abgehandeltes, und nicht von jedem Land, obwohl es groß oder有力, angeblich ist. Territorialgewinn durch Einsatz von Kraft oder durch eine Angriff auf das Ziel ist illegal und unvermeidbar. Georgiener rufe auf die russische Föderation, um sofort ihre militärische Aktivitäten zu besaßen und all ihre Kräfte und Armheiten aus der Ukraine abzuwehren. Erlaubt sofort den internationalen humanitären und Menschenrechtsmechanismen, obwohl es die ganze Territorie der Ukraine ist. Wiederum die Entscheidungen, die zu den Status integrierten Teilen der Ukraine, Donetsk, Luhansk Regionen und Crimea. Und um das Gleiche mit Georgiener zu tun, abwehren die Kräfte, erlauben humanitäres Zugang, wiederum die Status, die zu dieser Entscheidung gehört, mit Blick auf die besiedelten Territorien. Georgiener war amongst the co-sponsors of the draft Security Council Resolution that got vetoed. And we are the co-sponsors of the draft General Assembly Resolution that is soon to be considered. This resolution, although it concerns Ukraine, is a watershed moment for all of us. And I would dare say for the future of the rules-based order and our United Nations. So I call on you to vote in favor of the proposed draft. To vote to save the succeeding generations from this scourge of war. To vote for the United Nations. And in conclusion, we welcome the Secretary-General's decision to scale up the United Nations humanitarian operations in around Ukraine. And let me once again reiterate Georgia's unwavering support of independence, sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including Crimea and Donbass, and Ukraine's navigational rights in its territorial waters. I thank you.
Ich danke den distinguierten Vertretern der Georgiener Union. Und jetzt gebe ich dem Platz dem distinguierten Vertreter der Polen.
Herr Präsident! Herr Sekretär General, distinguierte Delegierte! Polen unterstützt vollständig die Resolution, die gerade vorgetragen wurde, der Ukraine. Und rufe auf alle Mitgliedstaaten, die sie hinterherstehen. Wir glauben tief, dass durch dieses Akt wir unsere Verpflichtung demonstrieren werden zu den Prinzipien, die im UN Charter enthalten sind. Nur durch die Erhaltung dieser fundamentalen Prinzipien können wir eine wirklich friedliche und langfristige Lösung für den Konflikt, der durch Russlands Aggression in der Ukraine geführt wurde. In diesem Sinne, die Resolution, über die wir jetzt wählen, führt den Weg zu einem wichtigen diplomatischen Erfolg, um die Arzneien dieser Kriege zu beenden. Um Frieden zu erreichen, Polen, als der heutige Präsident der Organisation for Security and Cooperation Europe, bat gestern für den sofortigen Abwehrfeuer in der Ukraine, um humanitäre Organisationen Unterstützung zu eröffnen. Aber diese Befehle für Frieden sind sogar mehr urgent, wenn man die Ereignisse in der Ukraine aus einer nahen Distanz Perspektive betrachtet. Lassen Sie mich Ihnen sagen, wie wir Polen sehen und zur Reaktion auf die Horren dieser Kriege als Nachbarn und Freunde der Ukraine. Es gibt keinen Zweifel, dass wir mit einer der größten humanitären Krisen in Europa seit dem Zweiten Weltkrieg konfrontiert sind. In den ersten drei Tagen der russischen Aggression, gesteuert durch die Komplizität des belarussischen Regimes Alexander Lukashenko, haben wir fast mehr als 500.000 Menschen in die Ukraine geflohen, 300.000 von denen haben sich in meinem Heimatland Hause zu Hause Hause zu suchen. Wir halten unsere Grenzen offen. Unsere diplomatische Mission hilft denen, die sich in Polen zu Hause zu suchen. Alle Nationen, die von Russlands Aggression verloren haben oder deren Leben an Risiko ist, können sich in meinem Land zu Hause Hause zu suchen. Und ich kann Ihnen sagen, dass wir nur für die erste Hälfte von heute Menschen von 125 Nationalitäten in Polen nach Europa geflohen sind. Das bedeutet, dass wir uns alle betroffen sind. Die Liste dieser Nationalitäten ist zu lang, um es Ihnen zu lesen. Also lasse ich nur die ersten, die mehr als 100 Nationen geflohen sind, lesen. Nur heute morgens. Ukraine, Uzbekistan, Nigeria, India, Marokko, Kazachstan, Pakistan, Afghanistan, Polen, Belarus, Iran, Türkei, Algerien und Russland. Dieses Hause kann auch den Studierenden gelten, was ich verstehen kann, ist ein ernstes Problem von einigen Kollegen in dieser Plenarsitzung. Die Studierenden sind auch willkommen in Polen und sie werden versprochen, diese Studien in Polen fortzusetzen. Wir wissen, dass einige der Missions hier in New York von der Desinformation, die diskriminierbare Praktiken am polnisch-ukrainischen Grenzgebiet berücksichtigen, aufgrund der Rasse und Religion. Ich kann Ihnen sagen, das ist ein völliger Lied und einterribes Anschuldigung für uns. Außerdem gibt Polen Hilfe, die sehr praktisch und lebensmittellich zugänglich ist. Mein Regime organisiert spezielle Trains für ältere Mütter mit kleinen Kindern, sowie Konvois mit Supplies und medizinischen Hilfen. Es gibt 7.000 Betten in 20 Krankenhäusern, bereit für die kranken und verlorenen. Und ich möchte annehmen, dass die ersten ukrainischen Hause Kinder geboren wurden in Polen in den letzten 24 Stunden. Und die ersten Leben rettenden Operationen wurden für die Älteren in unseren Krankenhäusern geleistet. Polen steht bereit, engagiert mit der UN OCHA, dem International Committee of the Red Cross und anderen humanitären Organisationen, um die Belastung der Bürger, die von der russischen Aggression targetiert werden. Aber was ich am meisten glücklich ist, ist die spontane Bereitstellung, um Hilfe von Einzelnen zu erhalten. Polnische Familien öffnen ihre Häuser zu Hause zu Geflüchteten. Sie bieten nahes Essen und Wohnraum. Tausende privater Autos kommen aus allen Polen, um diejenigen, die den Grenzgebiet passieren, zu finden. In den ersten zwei Tagen hatten wir lange Verkehrsklemmungen, weil viele Autos aus allen Seiten Polens kam. Polnische Menschen standen in Läden für Stunden, um Blut für die Ukraine zu spenden. Die Größe der Hilfe, die offert wurde, war so groß, dass das Regime ein spezielles Website eröffnet, „Helping Ukraine“, in dem Volunteers können registriert und guidance bekommen, für diejenigen, die in Bedarf sind. Während Diplomaten in meiner Mission unsere diplomatischen Pflichten hier in New York erfüllen, unsere Familienmitglieder und Freunde empfangen Geflüchtete, die direkt aus der Kriegszone kommen. In diesem Konflikt kann Polen nicht eine geopolitische Supermacht sein, aber wir wollen eine Solidarität-Supermacht werden. Und das ist wie wir es wollen, die schlimme Realität für besser zu ändern. Im selben Moment möchte ich einen Dank an die Ukrainer geben, die ihre Heimatland schützen und weiterhin für ihre Freiheit ihres Landes stehen. Das sind nicht nur Soldaten, sondern auch Menschen wie Vasilyna, eine 30-jährige Mutter von zwei kleinen Daunen, die in einem Dorf nahe dem polnisch-ukrainischen Grenzgebiet lebt. Als meine Familie einen Trip in Polen offered, antwortete sie: „Ich kann jetzt nicht in die Ukraine leave. Das ist mein Land. Ich muss bleiben und es kümmern.“ Und jetzt kocht sie Essen für Soldaten und Geflüchtete am Grenzgebiet. Eine ähnliche Antwort wurde von unseren Diplomaten in der Ukraine gegeben. Wir halten unsere Embassaden und Consularien offen, und sie erfüllen ihre diplomatischen und consularischen Pflichten. Lassen Sie mich Ihnen, Kollegen, das Message zu您, das ich heute morgens von unserem Ambassador Bartosz Chicholski in Kyiv erhalten habe, aussprechen. Ich quote: „Ich bin der polnische Ambassador zu der Ukraine. Ich arbeite in Kyiv, eine Stadt der Größe Berlin, in der über 4 Millionen Menschen leben. Von Thursday Morgen muss ich von den Bomben in meinem basement zwölfmal pro Tag verstecken. Ich wach zu Exchancen von Maschinengewehrfeuer. Fenster schweben von Raketen detonieren. Ich bin bestreut, dass du jetzt, wenn du in New York entscheiden, Hunderte Tausend befürchtete Residenz von Kharkiv, Dnipro, Zhitomir, Myriupol, Lviv und Kyiv dich mit Hoffnung und Glaube an den Macht der internationalen Gesetzgebung sehen. End of Quote.“ Und ich möchte zum Schluss durch die Warnung, die ein 19. Jahrhundert russisches Novelist Fyodor Dostoevsky in seinem Buch mit einem wichtigen Titel „Krim und Pflicht“ formuliert hat. Das Message des Buches ist folgender: Wenn jemand, wie Raskolnikov, denkt, er sei exceptionell und frei von moralischen Pflichten und deshalb fühlt, er sei verantwortlich für ein Mordverbrechen, in der Endeffekt wird er die Pflicht des Verbrechens selbst bekämpfen. Denn ein Mord verfolgen ist bereits der größte Pflicht. Es gibt kein Mord ohne die Pflicht. Vielen Dank.
Ich danke den distinguierten Vertretern der Polen. Und jetzt gebe ich dem Platz dem distinguierten Vertreter der Austria.
Danke, Herr Präsident. Wie üblich, Austria aligniert sich mit dem Statement des Europäischen Union. Jedoch wollen wir auch unsere Stimme in unserer nationalen Kapazität hinzufügen, weil was derzeit auf der Ukraine deliberately infiziert wird, uns nicht erlauben lässt, still zu bleiben. Excellencies, Kolleginnen und Kollegen, Freunde der Ukrainer! Lassen Sie mich beginnen, Ihnen, Herr Sekretär General, Ihre klaren Worte heute Morgen und in den vergangenen Tagen zu danken. Wir sind dankbar, dass die Vereinten Nationen da sind, um denen, die in Bedarf sind, Hilfe zu helfen. Wir treffen heute hier, um die russische Aggression gegen die Ukraine zu diskutieren, um die Verletzung von Art. 2.4 des UN Charter zu diskutieren. Dass wir heute hier in dieser Raum treffen, ist ein gutes und ein schlechtes Ding. Es ist schlecht, weil es bedeutet, dass nach mehreren Tagen, seit Russland seine Aggression gegen die souveräne Territorie der Ukraine lanciert, wir immer noch militärische Attacken beobachten, schreckliche Menschenverlorenheit und Verlust von Leben. Es ist auch schlecht, weil Frieden und Sicherheit Fragen der Sicherheitskonsulatur sollen behandelt werden. Als Hauptverantwortlicher für die Erhaltung internationaler Frieden und Sicherheit kann die Sicherheitskonsulatur nicht stillbleiben, wenn die Grundprinzipien unserer internationalen, regelbasierten Ordnung von Militärdienst und von Tanken zertrampelt werden. Letzte Freitag, jedoch, wurde die Entscheidung der Sicherheitskonsulatur blockiert durch den Veto eines permanenten Mitglieds, der russische Föderation. Obwohl 81 Mitglieder der internationalen Gemeinschaft die Drucksituation des Ko-Pen-Holders unterstützt haben. Ja, der Veto-Power ist im UN Charter vorgesehen, aber so ist auch die Pflicht, UN-Prinzipien zu behalten. Wenn im 21. Jahrhundert die Sicherheitskonsulatur blockiert wird in einer Situation, die eine blauherrliche Verbrechen internationaler Gesetzgebung darstellt, sollten wir uns fragen, ob dieses System von Veto-Powern noch in der Lage ist, unsere internationalen Beziehungen zu regulieren. Jedoch, Kollegen, unsere Treffen heute hier ist auch gut. Es ist gut, dass die Allgemeine Plenarsitzung da ist, wenn die Sicherheitskonsulatur nicht ihre Mandeln erfüllt. Und es ist gut, dass wir jetzt die Möglichkeit haben, hier in dieser General Assembly Hall unsere Stimmen zu erhöhen, um die Prinzipien des UN Charter zu erinnern. Unser Charter. Und um deutlich zu sagen, dass wir nicht stillbleiben, wenn der Charter verletzt wird, in der tiefsten Hinsicht. Das ist unser Recht. Das ist unsere Pflicht als Mitglieder der Organisation. Kollegen, Ende dieses Debates werden wir auf eine Resolution zustimmen, die die Aggression Russlands gegen die Ukraine bedenkt und Solidarität mit dem Volk der Ukraine demonstriert. Austria wird auf die Resolution „Yes“ zustimmen und fordert alle von Ihnen, auch so zu tun. Durch die Wahl „Yes“ zeigen wir dem Welt, dass die UN es in der Lage ist, ihre Verantwortung zu tragen, die Regierungsgesetz, internationaler Gesetz und den UN Charter zu schützen. Durch die Wahl „Yes“ zeigen wir, dass diese Aktien und ähnliche horrifizierte Aktien von der internationalen Gemeinschaft nicht genehmigt werden. Und worauf es wichtig ist, durch die Wahl „Yes“ zeigen wir dem ukrainischen Volk, dass sie nicht alleine sind. Ich weiß, dass es für viele von uns solche Wahlen schwierig sein kann. Einige sagen, das ist ein regionaler Problem, ein europäischer Problem. Kollegen, ein Attacke gegen einen unserer Mitglieder, einen Mitgliedern dieser Organisation, ist ein Attacke auf uns alle. In unserem interankelnden Welt, unser Welt ist ein Region. Cyberwaffen schlagen überall. Raketen haben globale Reichweite. Der Welt ist nicht nur regional, es ist lokal geworden. Einige sagen, wir müssen Sicherheitsbedenken respektieren. Ja, Kollegen, wir müssen. Jeder hat Sicherheitsbedenken. Die Ukraine hatte sie und gab Nuclearwaffen und vertraute, dass andere sie nicht schaden würden. Aber deutlich, wenn Sie Sicherheitsbedenken haben, lösen sie mit Dialog, nicht mit Tanks. Wenn ein Land mit einem der größten Armee und Nucleararsenale instinkt, sollte es Kooperation, Dialog, Disarmament suchen und nicht Kraft gegen andere. Einige sagen, „Schauen Sie an andere, schauen Sie an diese anderen Fälle, die wir hatten.“ Was über die Vergangenheit? Kollegen, wir wissen das „Was über“-Wesen gut. Versuchen, Schaden mit Vergangenem zu justifizieren. Versuchen, dich zu beschuldigen, indem du zu den Fehlern anderer anschaust. Aber nur weil wir im Vergleich zu Ungerechtigkeit und Schaden nicht aufgestanden haben, sollte es uns nicht verhindern, uns jetzt aufzustehen. Ja, es ist wahr, andere haben Aggressionen, Verbrechen und Fehler getan. Ja, die internationalen Gemeinschaften haben manchmal ein Schwere von Unität gezeigt. Und ja, die internationalen Gemeinschaften haben manchmal zu hessitiv gewesen. Aber lass uns nicht weiter diese gleiche Fehler machen. Lass uns eine neue Epoche starten, wenn wir zusammenarbeiten und für unsere gemeinsamen Prinzipien aufstehen. Schützen wir die Regierungsgesetz. Lassen wir nicht dem Recht des Mächtigen. Lassen wir auf diese Resolution „Yes“ zustimmen. Herr Präsident, Austria ist nicht Teil von irgendeiner militärischen Vereinbarkeit. Mr. President, Austria is not part of any military alliance. We rely for our security on the respect and implementation of international law, of treaties, of custom, including humanitarian law. Reports about Russian attacks on civilians and civilian objects in urban areas are extremely worrying. Rockets or missiles hitting apartment buildings in Kiev cannot be accepted. These attacks constitute war crimes under international humanitarian law. We urge Russia to strictly adhere to international humanitarian law, in particular regarding the protection of civilians in urban warfare, and immediately cease these attacks and refrain from using explosive weapons in populated areas. We strongly condemn the use of cluster munitions, which is incompatible with international humanitarian law and outlawed under the Convention on Cluster Munitions. And colleagues, the threat of use of nuclear weapons? Any nuclear threat of this kind is a violation of the principles of the UN Charter. The implied catastrophic humanitarian consequences do not respect borders and pose a threat to all of humanity. This is completely unacceptable. Perpetrators and those responsible ordering these crimes need to be held accountable. The International Criminal Court may exercise jurisdiction over and investigate any acts of genocide, crime against humanity, or war crimes committed within the territory of Ukraine. In this regard, we welcome the statement of ICC prosecutor Khan, reminding us all that his office can exercise jurisdiction over and investigate any act of genocide, crime against humanity, or war crime committed within the territory of Ukraine since February 2014. Mr. President, in the last couple of days, Ukrainians have endured incredible human suffering. In order to help ease the humanitarian catastrophe, Austria contributed 2.5 million euros to the ICRC and NGOs, and additional humanitarian assistance will be decided soon. Those organizations’ valuable work must be ensured by guaranteeing humanitarian access. Colleagues, in sum, Austria condemns the Russian aggression against Ukraine. Austria calls on Russia to reverse its decision to recognize the self-proclaimed Donetsk and Luhansk People’s Republics, which represents a grave violation of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. Austria urges Russia to immediately withdraw its troops and stop any further bloodshed and return to the path of peaceful dialogue like any member of the UN is obliged to do. Vienna is ready to host and facilitate such dialogue. We hope that today’s start of bilateral discussions between delegations from Ukraine and Russia can serve as a first step towards an urgently needed ceasefire. And colleagues, we call on you to vote yes on today’s resolution. I know it’s not always easy. Many of us have good relations with Russia. We love the culture, admire the traditions, and have good Russians friends. But a good friend, an honest friend, will speak up and say what needs to be said to do and what needs to be done when a friend commits an illegal, an evil act. This is what this resolution is for. Imagine for one moment that you are in Ukraine’s shoes. What would you expect from the UN, from this General Assembly, if you were in Ukraine’s place? In this dark hour, it is our moral, our legal obligation to condemn the violations of the Charter and show solidarity with the victim of an aggression. Austria will show its full solidarity with Ukraine, the Ukraine government, Ukrainian people. We stand with you. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Austria. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Czech Republic.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, excellencies. The Czech Republic aligns itself with the EU Statement and wishes to add the following in its national capacity. Let me begin with the most important words I can say here today. We urge Russia to stop immediately its military actions and to unconditionally withdraw all its forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine. We are meeting here today at a critical moment, not just for Ukraine or Europe, but for the United Nations as a whole. A permanent member of the UN Security Council has started a war of aggression against a fellow UN member state. It is a blatant violation of international law. It is a flagrant violation of the UN Charter and its principles, which all we should uphold and abide by. This seminal document was written with the express purpose of averting the scourge of war. Russian President Putin chose to reject diplomacy and multiple offers for talks. Instead, he decided to launch a savage conquest, inflicting untold pain and suffering on the people of Ukraine. There are horrific reports coming from Ukraine. Civilians, including children, being killed in their hometowns. Families separated. Hundreds of thousands of people forced to flee for their lives. Mr. President, let me make it crystal clear. Russia and its people are under no threat from Ukraine or NATO. We condemn, in the strongest terms, Mr. Putin’s threat of using nuclear weapons. Indeed, it is a very dangerous rhetoric and only further exacerbates the overall security situation. Nothing can justify the use of nuclear weapons. Mr. President, Russia must be held accountable for its aggressive actions. Ukraine has accepted the jurisdiction of the International Criminal Court related to genocide, crimes against humanity, and war crimes. We will be looking to the ICC to prioritize investigations of crimes committed in Ukraine. Similarly, we strongly support Ukraine’s filing of a case against Russia at the International Court of Justice, requesting the ICG to order Russia to cease its unlawful attack on Ukraine and to stop Russia’s false claims that acts of genocide have been perpetrated in the Luhansk and Donetsk oblasts of Ukraine. Mr. President, I would like to reiterate my country’s unwavering support for the sovereignty, territorial integrity, and independence of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including the illegally annexed Crimea. This is why the Czech Republic throws its full support behind the draft UN General Assembly resolution. The people of the Czech Republic stand firmly with Ukraine. Suffering of innocent civilians in Ukraine has raised a huge wave of solidarity among our people. Humanitarian aid is pouring across the border and to border regions where Ukrainians are fleeing in a desperate search for safety. The Czech government, local communities, as well as individuals, have offered and provided help to the people who have fled from the suffering caused by the Russian aggression. And we will continue to do so. Mr. President, we deeply regret the use of a veto by the Russian representative last Friday to block the UN Security Council resolution. This prevented the UN Security Council from fulfilling its fundamental role to maintain international peace and security. It is yet another proof of Russia’s blatant disrespect for this organization. However, the large number of cosponsors of the draft resolution clearly demonstrated the prevailing opinion of the international community. Mr. President, Russia cannot veto the reality on the ground. And let me here echo the words of the UN Secretary-General speaking after last Friday’s vote in the Security Council. The United Nations was born out of war to end war. Today, that objective was not achieved. We must never give up. We must give peace another chance. Dear colleagues, we, the representatives of one hundred and ninety-three nations gathered here at this emergency special session of the UN General Assembly, have a solemn duty to uphold the purpose and basic principles of the UN Charter and international law, as we are about to take a vote on a draft resolution which is soon to be formally introduced. Dear colleagues, soon, each and every member of this honorable body will have a chance to declare where they stand on the UN Charter and international law. And quite frankly, on the most crucial matter of war and peace. Excellencies, colleagues, I’m making a plea to each and every one of you representing here all UN member states. Please, vote for this resolution. Vote with your conscience. Vote for the end of bloodshed and human suffering. Vote for peace. Vote for the UN Charter and international law. Vote for all the good our United Nations was founded to represent. And please let us not forget, the whole world is watching. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Czech Republic. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Switzerland.
Monsieur le Président.
Mr. President, Secretary-General, dear colleagues. As Doug Hamerschall clearly stated, the United Nations were not created to take us to heaven, but to save us from hell. And yet, what the population in Ukraine is experiencing in recent days looks very much like what we have pledged to avoid. This is why this assembly is meeting today in the face of a war that has already cost many lives. Each life lost is one too many. Our thoughts are with the victims and with their families. We express our solidarity with the Ukrainian people and their democratically elected authorities. We are deeply concerned about the humanitarian situation and the displacement of hundreds of thousands of people. This assembly is meeting today at the request of the Security Council due to the lack of consensus among its permanent members. Switzerland supported the draft resolution in the Security Council aimed at ending the hostilities and restoring international law. The blocking of this resolution by the veto of a permanent member is contrary to Article 27 of the Charter. The Russian Federation, as a party to the conflict, should have abstained from voting. We fully support the draft resolution of the General Assembly, and we call upon member states to do the same. Switzerland strongly condemns Russia’s attack on Ukraine. We are also concerned about the use of Belarus territory for this military operation. Russian attempts to legitimize its action are not credible. There was no provocation to justify such an attack. We call upon Russia and upon all nuclear weapon states to refrain from any threat to use these weapons, and certainly from using them. Russia has just joined a declaration of the P5, which reaffirmed that a nuclear war cannot be won and must never be fought. Switzerland reiterates its full support for the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. Switzerland once again calls on all parties to respect international humanitarian law and human rights. We condemn all violations. This also applies to cyberspace. The protection of the civilian population, as well as persons who are not part of the fighting, must be the priority. Switzerland is deeply concerned about substantiated allegations of the use of cluster munitions. Assets essential to the survival of the civilian population, as well as civilian and medical infrastructure, must not be targeted. Furthermore, we call on the parties to ensure rapid and unhindered humanitarian access and the safety of humanitarian and medical personnel. Switzerland stands in solidarity. We are committed to mobilizing additional resources to meet humanitarian needs in Ukraine and in the region. Together with our European partners, we will continue our long tradition of welcoming refugees. Moreover, Switzerland has fully implemented the European Union sanctions against Russia. We welcome the work of the Special Monitoring Mission of the Organization for Security and Cooperation in Europe. We regret that the serious situation has left the organization with no other choice than to temporarily evacuate its staff. Switzerland welcomes the UN Secretary-General’s offer of good offices, as well as the diplomatic efforts of the member states, which have left no stone unturned in order to promote a diplomatic solution through dialogue. Switzerland reiterates its offer of good offices if the parties to the conflict so wish. We welcome the fact that the parties to the conflict have met today for initial negotiations. We very much hope, as the Secretary-General does so keenly, that these talks will lead to initial results, such as, for example, a ceasefire. This conflict, like all conflicts, can only be solved through dialogue. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Switzerland. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of New Zealand.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General. Today, our thoughts are with the people of Ukraine as they continue to fight Russia’s large-scale invasion. Innocent lives lost. Everyday lives in turmoil. Young and old lives that will never be the same as innocent people suddenly find themselves as refugees. The worst part of the trauma we see unfolding in front of us is knowing that it was completely avoidable. New Zealand is in no doubt that the conflict in Ukraine is a direct result of the unprovoked and unjustified actions of Russia and its decision to flagrantly ignore and and unjustified actions of Russia and its decision to flagrantly ignore international law. Russia is escalating its aggression by its decision to increase the readiness of its nuclear weapons. Russia’s actions are nothing short of the acts of a bully. New Zealand supports the Secretary-General’s assessment that these acts represent a clear violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine, and are inconsistent with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. In standing in support of Ukraine, we are also standing in defence of the UN Charter. We cannot pick and choose when to espouse the centrality of the Charter. This emergency session of the General Assembly is taking place as a direct result of Russia’s actions alone. Its ongoing military aggression threatens not only the peace and security of Ukraine, but that of Europe and of the international community. We are here today because the United Nations Security Council failed to act last Friday to condemn Russia’s actions to invade Ukraine. Russia’s use of the veto, when it is not only party to this conflict, but the direct cause of it, is a disgrace. New Zealand, along with a group of small states, oppose the granting of the veto to the P5. We have continued to oppose the veto since its inception, and we remain strong in our conviction that there is no place for the veto in the UN Security Council. With the Security Council having failed to deliver against its responsibilities, we, the General Assembly, must now stand up to play our part. New Zealand is a primary cosponsor of the General Assembly resolution, and we encourage all Member States to vote in favour of the resolution, in support of Ukraine, in support of international peace and security, and in support of our treasured UN Charter. Excuse me. New Zealand has consistently expressed our strong support for international efforts to de-escalate the Ukraine crisis diplomatically. Having turned away from diplomacy, Russia must now face the consequences of that decision. New Zealand has joined other Member States in implementing measures to respond to Russia’s actions, including introducing targeted travel bans against Russian government officials and other individuals associated with the Russian invasion of Ukraine, and prohibiting the export of goods to Russian military and security forces. Our thoughts today must be with the people of Ukraine, who are now facing a humanitarian crisis caused by the conflict. We echo the President of the General Assembly’s call that all Member States must uphold their obligations under international humanitarian law. Further, we, the international community, must act now to prevent further pointless loss of innocent life and to support those who now find themselves displaced through no fault of their own. We commend Ukraine’s neighbours for their selfless acts of taking in large numbers of Ukrainians and other nationalities who seek refuge from this conflict. We acknowledge with a grim sense of horror, but sadly, little surprise, the role of accomplice and facilitator that Belarus has played in support of Russia’s invasion. New Zealand has also extended its travel bans to key members of the Belarusian government. New Zealand is contributing financially to the humanitarian response and will consider all humanitarian options available to support the international humanitarian response. We welcome France and Mexico’s tabling of a humanitarian resolution in the United Nations Security Council today. Finally, Aotearoa, New Zealand, is a proponent of peace and reconciliation. In this vein, we say to Russia, act consistently with your international obligations, cease military operations in Ukraine, permanently withdraw to avoid a catastrophic and pointless loss of innocent life, take all possible steps to protect civilians in line with international humanitarian law, and return to diplomatic negotiations as a pathway to resolve this conflict. Thank you.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Panama, on behalf of the Alliance for Development and Democracy.
Mister President, Secretary-General, the Republic of Panama, on behalf of the Republic of Costa Rica, the Dominican Republic, as member countries of the Alliance for Development and Democracy, are honoured to address this 11th emergency special session in order to express our position during the convening of this session on the draft resolution on the unprovoked armed aggression by the Russian Federation against Ukraine. The delegations of Panama, Costa Rica and the Dominican Republic, on the basis of shared values and in respect for the United Nations Charter and for international law, condemn the use of force and the violation of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. The Alliance supports the Secretary-General of the United Nations, Mister Antonio Guterres, in his call for a cessation of hostilities and for moderation and reason to prevail, and that international humanitarian law be respected and civilians be protected. We reiterate that all efforts should be made in order to provide rapid, secure and unhindered access for humanitarian assistance to those that require it in Ukraine in order to protect civilians, including humanitarian staff and those in vulnerable situations, particularly girls and boys. The serious situation caused by the displacement of thousands of Ukrainians looking for safe refuge in neighbouring countries represents an additional challenge to the global complex crisis brought on by the pandemic. This is why the countries of Latin America, including members of the Alliance, have undertaken joint efforts in order to facilitate safe transit of our nationals crossing the Ukrainian border. Dialogue and negotiation accompanied by respect for the letter and the spirit of the United Nations Charter, the resolutions of the General Assembly and international law constitute the only guarantee for a lasting solution to the conflict which today is afflicting Eastern Europe. Finally, we firmly call upon the parties to return to negotiations and diplomatic dialogue, and that peace be promoted and that there be respect for multilateralism. These must be at the core of action in this area. Thank you.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
Mister President, the situation in Ukraine is changing sharply. China is closely following the developments. The situation has evolved to a point which China doesn’t wish to see. It is not in the interest of any party. The immediate priority is for all parties to exercise restraint, prevent further worsening of the situation, while stepping up diplomatic efforts aiming for a political solution. China welcomes the start of direct talks between Russia and Ukraine. Ukraine should serve as a bridge of communication between East and West, rather than a frontline of major power rivalry. We call for efforts to create an atmosphere and conditions conducive to direct talks between the parties concerned, as this is the fundamental way to resolve the issue. All action taken by the UN and the relevant parties of the international community should prioritise regional peace and stability and universal security for all, and should help de-escalate tensions and facilitate a diplomatic settlement. China does not approve of any approach that may exacerbate tensions. China supports relevant UN agencies’ continued work on humanitarian aid in Ukraine. We believe that the safety of civilian life and property and their humanitarian needs should be effectively guaranteed. Mister President, as a prominent member of the UN Security Council, China always conscientiously fulfils its responsibility of maintaining international peace and security. It is our consistent and unequivocal position that all countries’ sovereignty and territorial integrity should be respected, and the purposes and principles of the UN Charter be upheld. China will continue to play constructive role in the pursuit of peace. Mister President, the Cold War has long ended. The Cold War mentality based on block confrontation should be abandoned. Nothing can be gained from stirring up a new Cold War, but everyone will stand to lose. One country’s security should not come at the expense of other countries’ security. Still less can regional security be guaranteed by reinforcing or even expanding military blocks. China supports the EU, NATO and Russia resuming dialogue. Bearing in mind the notion of indivisible security, properly addressing the legitimate security concerns of all parties, including Russia, striving to forge a balanced, effective and sustainable European security mechanism so as to achieve lasting peace and stability for the European continent. Thank you, Mister President.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bulgaria.
Thank you, Mister President. Mister President, distinguished delegates, Bulgaria aligns itself with the statement delivered on behalf of the European Union, and I would like to highlight a few points in my national capacity. Mister President, we have gathered here today under extraordinary circumstances, circumstances that defy reason but unfortunately are reality. And that reality is that the Russian Federation, a permanent member of the Security Council, is executing an act of aggression against Ukraine, a founding member of the UN. Bulgaria condemns in the strongest possible terms this provoked and unprovoked and unjustified military aggression, which is in gross violation of international law and of the principles of the UN Charter. The illegal military aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine not only undermines global security and stability, but also puts the international rules-based order in jeopardy. It is deplorable that the Russian Federation used its veto power to prevent the Security Council from exercising its primary responsibility for maintenance of international peace and security. However, the decision of the Security Council to urgently refer the matter to the General Assembly by calling on emergency special session demonstrates the resolve of the rest of the Council to do everything possible to address this serious act of aggression. The fact that for the first time in forty years, the Security Council takes such a decision speaks of the gravity of the situation. We commend the decision by the Security Council, and now it is up to all of us to live up to the responsibility to uphold the principles of the UN Charter and international law and to send a strong and unequivocal message by condemning the act of aggression and the illegal actions by the Kremlin. Bulgaria demands that the Russian Federation immediately cease its military actions, unconditionally withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine, and fully respect Ukraine’s territorial integrity, sovereignty and independence within its internationally recognised borders. The use of force and coercion to change borders has no place in the 21st century. Tensions and conflicts should be resolved exclusively through dialogue and diplomacy. We strongly condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression, including providing its territory to be used as launching ground for the Russian aggression, and call on it to refrain from such action and to abide by its international obligations. The reports of civilian casualties, including of children, and the destructions of civilian infrastructure, including critical infrastructure, are deeply concerning. We are particularly outraged by the use of weapons that have indiscriminate effect in residential areas and against the civilian population. This is unacceptable and must stop immediately. We call on the Russian Federation to fully respect international humanitarian law and international human rights law and to allow safe and unhindered humanitarian access and assistance to all persons in need. The Russian Federation bears full responsibility for this aggression and all the destruction and loss of life, and the leadership of the Russian Federation should and will be held accountable in accordance with international law. Mister President, colleagues, it is our duty to do the right thing. We need to stand together against any act of aggression and against any violation of the UN Charter. We need to fiercely defend the principles of the UN Charter, international law and the rules-based order because they are our only guarantee for peace. We cannot turn a blind eye when a blatant act of aggression is being executed against a sovereign, peace-loving nation. Today, it is against Ukraine; tomorrow, it could be against any one of us. In conclusion, I would like to reiterate Bulgaria’s unwavering support for the sovereignty, independence, unity and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognised borders. I would also like to thank the Ukrainian people for their extraordinary courage and resilience. You are not alone. Thank you.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Italy.
Mister President, Mister Secretary-General, dear colleagues, Italy aligns itself with the statement of the European Union and wishes to add the following remarks in its national capacity. We do welcome the convening of this special emergency session. Following the impossibility for the Security Council to discharge its duties and adopt its own resolution on the matter due to the veto of the Russian Federation, the General Assembly had an obligation to make its voice heard in front of such a grave threat to international peace and security. We are thankful to those members of the Security Council that made this possible. Italy, together with its EU partners and allies, has made its position clear all along throughout this entire crisis with statements and consistent acts, standing firmly in support of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. standing firmly in support of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine and in full solidarity with Ukrainian people. The unprovoked aggression decided by the Russian leadership is a blatant violation of international law and the UN Charter, and as such, it has to be condemned in the strongest possible terms. The involvement of Belarus as a facilitator of the Russian aggression is also to be condemned. In close coordination with the EU partners and allies, we have implemented unprecedented economic and financial sanctions, including on Belarus. As already stated, further steps will have to be taken if the assault against Ukraine continues. We call upon the Russian Federation to stop immediately its action and to withdraw its military forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders extending to territorial waters. We urge the Russian Federation to respect the principles set in the UN Charter and in the Declaration of Friendly Relations, to abide by the Minsk Agreement, and to redirect urgently its action towards a peaceful solution. We trust that the General Assembly will, through the adoption of the tabled draft resolution, show cohesion and determination in dealing with a situation that is threatening the existence of a member state, causing a growing number of casualties, including civilians and children, and ultimately is undermining the very essence of multilateral relations. Mr. President, Russia's actions are causing enormous human suffering and triggering a humanitarian disaster. We express our heartfelt solidarity with Ukraine and its people, and we mourn all the victims of this business and the vain na of this senseless war. Together with our partners and building on the support it has been provided since 2014, Italy is scaling up its financial and material support to strengthen the capabilities and resilience of Ukraine with an amount of around 110 million euros in aid credit and grants and additional contributions. We are also determined to provide increased humanitarian support to assist the people of Ukraine in these dramatic circumstances. In this context, international humanitarian law must be upheld. Safe and unhindered humanitarian access must be granted. The humanitarian staff must be protected. We welcome the convening of a meeting of the Security Council on the humanitarian dimension of this crisis later today, and we hope that the discussions will lead to the adoption of a concrete deliverable. Lastly, we acknowledge and support the statements of the Secretary-General in defense of the principles of the UN Charter and his action in support of the humanitarian needs in Ukraine. Italy will remain actively engaged in close coordination with its European partners and allies and reaching out to the broader UN membership in favor of the immediate halt of this aggression and in support of the urgent return to a peaceful path. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Italy. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brazil.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, this is a defining moment for our organization and for the world. When the drafters of the Charter envisaged our collective security system back in 1945, they probably thought they had seen the worst in terms of tragedy and human suffering. If they were here today, they would doubt that assessment. We are under a swift escalation of tensions that could put all of humanity at risk, but we still have time to stop it. Brazil voted in favor of the draft resolution before the Security Council on the situation in Ukraine. We regret that the draft was not adopted, but firmly believe that the Security Council has not yet exhausted the instruments at its disposal to contribute to a negotiated and diplomatic solution towards peace. The urgency of the situation convinced us of the need to add the voice of the General Assembly to that of the Security Council in seeking solutions to the crisis in and around Ukraine. No one can deny the primary responsibility of the Security Council for the maintenance of international peace and security, nor the complementary role that this assembly can play to that end. Brazil welcomes the engagement of the Secretary-General in attempting to de-escalate the growing tensions. It also notes that Ukraine has initiated a case in the International Court of Justice based on the Genocide Convention. This is the moment for the principal organs of the United Nations to work together in pursuing one of the organization's main objectives, to save us from the scourge of war. For that, we need to be exceedingly cautious in moving forward, both in the General Assembly and elsewhere. We are currently witnessing a succession of events that, if not contained soon, could lead to a much broader confrontation. Everyone will suffer, not just those who are fighting. Those who have repeatedly pleaded for de-escalation will also bear the costs of the power play between NATO and Russia that we are currently witnessing. Over the last years, we have seen the progressive deterioration of the security situation and balance of power in Eastern Europe. The undermining of the Minsk Agreements by all parties and the discrediting of the security concerns voiced by Russia prepare the ground for the crisis we are all witnessing. Let me be clear, however. This situation in no way justifies the use of force against the territorial integrity and sovereignty of any member state. It is against the most basic norms and principles we all abide by and a clear breach of the UN Charter. Mr. President, it is of our collective interest to jointly do all we can to stop and reverse the belligerent actions before it is too late. Brazil reiterates its calls for an immediate ceasefire in Ukraine as well as with full respect for international humanitarian law. Equally important, we call all actors involved to reassess their decisions concerning the supply of weapons, the recourse to cyber attacks, and the application of selective sanctions, particularly those which could affect the global economy, including the critical area of food security. At this moment, we need constructive solutions, not actions that will only prolong hostilities and spread the conflict with rippling effects to the world's economy and security. As we speak, hundreds of thousands of civilians have already fled Ukraine. Many more will certainly follow, millions perhaps. The destruction of infrastructure has left people without electricity and water. Damage to essential infrastructure, interruption of basic services, including transportation and access to basic supplies, the danger to persons with disabilities, the elderly, and children, are causes of grave concern. There are pressing humanitarian needs for medical services, medicines, health equipment, shelter, and protection. The prospect of hostilities conducted in populated areas, compounded by the possible use of explosive weapons and direct participation of civilians, is also extremely worrisome. We urge all parties to avoid this scenario at all costs, bearing in mind the grave risks it poses to the civilian population. We call on all parties to adopt measures to ensure the protection of civilians and of critical civilian infrastructure, as well as to ensure unhindered humanitarian access to all those in need and the protection of refugees and displaced persons. We also reiterate our appeal to Ukraine and Russia to facilitate the withdrawal of all persons who want to leave the Ukrainian territory. Brazil expresses its gratitude to Poland, Slovakia, Hungary, Moldova, Romania, and others that are facilitating the exit of people fleeing the conflict, including Brazilians and Latin Americans. Let me also take this opportunity to express our solidarity to all families who have lost someone in this war, to all people left without home, water, and electricity, to those who are fleeing in fear, sometimes with nowhere to go, and to everyone who is now trapped in a conflict zone, desperately attempting to find refuge. I wish to commend all personnel that are now in Ukraine, trying to alleviate the suffering of the population. We know that you are doing your best in very challenging circumstances, and we know that more could be done to assist you in your efforts. Mr. President, few times has the General Assembly been convened under the Uniting for Peace Resolution. By meeting today, the international community shows its unwavering determination to reach a diplomatic solution to the ongoing conflict in Ukraine. A peaceful settlement of the crisis is not only the cessation of hostilities. It is about creating the conditions for a greater sense of security among all involved. It is about rebuilding bridges and regaining trust. And it is about respect. Respect for each other's legitimate security concerns, for civilian lives, for all countries that do not want a war, for international law, and for the most basic principles that have guided this organization since its inception. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brazil. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Canada.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished delegates. The hour is grave. The Russian Federation, a permanent member of the Security Council, has unleashed an illegal and unjustifiable war of aggression against the sovereignty, the territorial integrity, and the political independence of another member state of the United Nations, Ukraine. The actions of the Russian Federation constitute an egregious violation of the Charter of the United Nations and of its purposes and of its principles. The sovereign equality of all states, the right of all peoples to self-determination, the peaceful settlement of disputes, and the prohibition on the use of force. By unleashing this war, the Russian Federation seeks to destroy the freedom of a people and of a nation, a sovereign, independent, and integral nation. This is a war that is fueled by the desire of President Putin to restore imperialism and colonialism. These are the days against which the members of the United Nations have been fighting for generations. And the Russian Federation, once again, has prevented the Security Council from exercising its primary duty, that of protecting the peace, that of the maintenance of international peace and security. We are gathered here today because the Russian Federation has yet again illegitimately exercised its veto right, which we continue to view as illegitimate, as it has done on a number of other occasions. And the Russian Federation has now turned its threat to Ukraine, Europe, and the entire world with the threat of nuclear weapons use in a flagrant violation of the joint statement of the leaders of the five permanent members of the Security Council this past January.
Mr. President, it was in January of this year that members of the P5 agreed that a recourse to the nuclear option, to the nuclear threat, to the nuclear possibility was wrong. They admitted that no one could win this kind of confrontation. Just a few days later, President Putin announced that he was going to resort to this threat, directly contrary to what he had promised, signed, sealed, and delivered six weeks before. And so here we are, with a war that is a threat to each and every one of us. Through this resolution before us today, we as members of the United Nations have the chance to stand up, to stand up in defense of a free people and to rebuke the evil notion that might makes right. And now, we must all step up and stand up. Canada urges all member states to unequivocally condemn Russia's actions and to vote in favor of the resolution that is now before the Assembly. Russia has not been alone in undermining these foundational norms and rules, Mr. President. Belarus has also violated its obligations under the UN Charter and under international law. By allowing Russia to use its territory to invade and launch attacks against Ukraine, Belarus is aiding and abetting Russia's illegal war of aggression. Belarus's decision to send its force into Ukraine and to revoke its non-nuclear status are all completely unacceptable to us and completely incon- are all completely unacceptable to us and completely incompatible with its obligations under the Charter of the United Nations. Mr. President, there must be accountability for these actions. As Russia has escalated its unjustifiable attack on Ukraine, its forces have encircled and shelled Ukrainian cities, targeting, killing and maiming innocent Ukrainian civilians, children, women and men. They are bombing civilian objects, hospitals, schools, kindergartens, apartments and homes. They're looting and forcibly displacing civilians. Many hundreds of thousands have fled in freezing temperatures, seeking shelter across Ukraine's borders. There are credible reports that Russian forces are using prohibited weapons, including cluster bombs and imposing siege warfare on Ukrainian cities. This is not news that comes in last week, news that comes in this morning. Pictures one can see visibly on social media as to what is taking place. Very different from the wars that have been waged in the past. We know what is happening in real time, and it is completely abhorrent. Let me be very clear, Mr. President. These are violations of international law, and they are acts that could amount to war crimes under international humanitarian law. Those acts flow directly from decisions that were made by President Putin and his inner circle, that were enabled by Belarus and their leaders, and carried out by Russia's armed forces and its proxies. These crimes began with an idea. What was the idea? We don't have to invent it. All we have to do is read President Putin's speeches and watch his declarations. The idea that a group of people are lesser, unequal and unworthy, worthy of the protection of the law. The idea that a people in fact do not exist as a people, that they don't have a right to be themselves, that they don't have a right to their own nation, to their own country, that they have no right to the protection of the Charter. The way Vladimir Putin describes the Ukrainian nation and its supporters over many generations fits the description of the idea that I have described. And it's that idea that lies at the heart of the acts that follow, because actions don't come out of the blue, they don't come out of nothing. It all starts with an idea. And yet, with a terrible sense of irony, President Putin has perverted the very notion of genocide by alleging that genocide has been committed in Ukraine. I must stress, there has been no such finding substantiated by any UN or independent organization. And as my colleague from Brazil said, just speaking before me, if there are complaints, and obviously there have been in this chamber and in the Security Council with respect to the treatment of the Russian minority in Ukraine, even if those complaints were fully justified, they are not an excuse for war and they are not an excuse for the aggression that we have seen. Ukraine has filed its own application under the Genocide Convention to the International Court of Justice. Canada takes the allegations filed by Ukraine with the greatest seriousness, as it does the decision of the prosecutor of the International Criminal Court to begin an investigation into potential crimes against humanity. These decisions are not taken lightly, and they have the most serious of consequences. But I want to stress, it is the International Court of Justice and the International Criminal Court that are the places for these allegations to be dealt with, not the battlefield and never by unilateral aggression. That's why we signed up to the Charter. We signed up to the Charter because we agreed that we would subject our disputes to processes created by us over many, many arduous years and debates what would be done in the event of a profound difference of opinion between states. We don't go to war, we go to the negotiating table, we go to court, we go to mediators. That's how we resolve disputes. The other way lies madness. Canada and the international community will spare no effort to ensure that violations of international law in Ukraine are in fact investigated, that evidence is gathered and that the perpetrators are held to account. We do so not only out of our conviction that the use of history, that the arc of history tends towards justice. We do so because what Ukrainians are being subjected to is horrific, and they deserve better and they deserve more. Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to speak directly to the brave people and the government of Ukraine. We are quite simply inspired by you. We are standing with you, and you are not alone. Our support for Ukraine, your country, for your Ukrainian democracy and for your right to choose your own future in Ukraine remains unwavering, steadfast and resolute. Canada will do everything in its power to help you as you hold strong and defend your homeland against this terrible Russian aggression. Together with our partners, we will ensure that President Putin and those who ordered, implemented and enabled this reckless war will continue to face significant costs and to be held accountable for their actions. Your struggle is now our struggle, and we are with you. Mr. President, if I could speak directly to the people of Russia, to the Russian protesters who are bravely demonstrating against the war, who have been met with brutal force and arbitrary arrests by riot police, to the thousands of Russian citizens who have written letters, had the courage to put their name on a letter to the President of Russia condemning this reckless decision, to all those Russians at home and abroad who are opposed to this senseless war, and you are in the millions. Canada and the world, we see you and we hear you. Your president, Vladimir Putin, has sorely miscalculated. He has ignored the democratic and law-abiding spirit of the Russian people. He has underestimated the brave Ukrainians defending their country from aggression, with whom you have no cause for war, no cause for hatred, no cause for violence. And he has severely misjudged the resolve of the world to stand against him. Whatever lies are spoken here today, trying to justify the unjustifiable or to explain the inexplicable, it is President Putin's war of choice that is making your lives much more difficult. But there is always time for de-escalation, there is always time for dialogue, and your president must choose this path. Should he not, I believe it will show just how much contempt he has for you and for the future of your country and the planet that we live on and share together. Mr. President, we should all say together, directly to President Putin, stop this war. Stop this war. Stop it before there is more death, more pain and more hardship. Stop the use of threats. Take your finger away from the nuclear button and never put it back for as long as you Come to grips with the reality of our time, as in more serious and rational moments you have done. Mr. President, it is never too late to stop. It's never too late to make a turn to diplomacy, to dialogue and to negotiation. The alternative cannot happen. So now it falls to all of us, as equal members of the United Nations, whose equality and sovereignty, as I've said before, is what we signed up to when we became members of this organization. We need to stand up to the principles, for the principles of the Charter, for the purposes of the Charter, and to heal the hurt and pain that has been caused by this terrible war of aggression. This responsibility belongs to us and to no others. We sit here, we have to make decisions, we have to take every step we can, the human footsteps, to peace, to reconciliation and to justice. That is now our job in the General Assembly, and we must seize this moment, this moment of accountability, this moment of justice, this moment of democracy, we must seize it together. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Canada, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Singapore.
We are meeting today in a historic emergency special session because the UN Security Council was unfortunately unable to discharge its primary responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security as a result of the veto cast by the Russian Federation, which is regrettable. We welcome the convening of this emergency special session as it allows all countries, especially the small countries, to raise their voice, to state their views and to register their concerns in this universal organ of the United Nations. Mr. President, Singapore has always taken a consistent position on the sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity of all countries. Singapore is a staunch supporter of the rules-based multilateral system and of the United Nations. The unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation is a clear and gross violation of fundamental norms and of the fundamental norms of international law and of the UN Charter. The UN Charter prohibits the use of force and acts of aggression against another sovereign This is a matter of principle for all small states and a matter of fundamental importance to all members of the General Assembly. For a tiny city-state like Singapore, this is an existential issue. A world order where might is right, or the strong do what they can and the weak suffer what they must, would be profoundly inimical to the security and survival of small states. We cannot accept one country attacking another without justification, arguing that its independence was the result of, and I quote, "historical errors and crazy decisions." We simply cannot accept such an argument. Such an argument and rationale would go against the internationally recognized legitimacy and territorial integrity of many countries, including Singapore. This is why Singapore condemns, in the strongest terms possible, any unprovoked invasion of a sovereign country under any pretext. We deplore the Russian Federation's special military operation against Ukraine, both its operation in the Donbass region and the broader land, air and sea attacks across Ukraine, including on Kyiv, the capital city. We also note with great sadness and regret reports of the growing number of casualties and the loss of many innocent lives as a result of this unjustified attack and act of war. We have taken note of the UN humanitarian and emergency relief coordinators' comments about the scale of the humanitarian assistance required to help those affected, and we call for safe and unhindered access for humanitarian assistance to Ukraine and all those in need. Mr. President, we reiterate that the sovereignty, political independence and territorial integrity of all countries, including Ukraine, must be respected within its internationally recognized borders. The Secretary General of the United Nations has stated that he considers the actions of the Russian Federation to be a violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and inconsistent with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. We agree with the Secretary General entirely. Let me repeat, we agree with the Secretary General entirely, and we support his call for the Russian Federation to withdraw all its troops from the territory of Ukraine and for the responsible actors to immediately cease all hostilities and prioritize diplomacy to address all issues peacefully in accordance with the UN Charter and international law. We also support the good offices of the UN Secretary General to be deployed in any way possible to facilitate diplomatic contacts and negotiations. Mr. President, let me conclude by saying that the world is watching us as we meet today in the General Assembly. As members of the General Assembly, we have to act swiftly, firmly and with unity of purpose. Singapore is one of the main co-sponsors of the draft resolution that has been tabled for adoption in this General Assembly. Singapore will not hesitate to vote yes on this draft resolution. Singapore will always vote to uphold the principles of the UN Charter and to uphold international law. And I would like to urge all members of the General Assembly to vote yes for this resolution. And distinguished delegates, this resolution is not about taking sides, it is about upholding international law and the principles of the UN Charter. The United Nations, distinguished delegates, is being tested today. It is important that all countries, especially the small states, send a clear signal that we are united for peace and we are united to defend the principles of the Charter and that we are united to uphold international law. I thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Singapore. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers this afternoon. I would like to inform members that at 3:00 PM today, the General Assembly will first hold the 60th plenary meeting of the 76th regular session, as announced in the Journal. This will be followed by the second plenary meeting of the 11th emergency special session, at which the debate on Agenda Item 5 will continue. The General Assembly has thus concluded this stage of its consideration of Agenda Item 5. The meeting is adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.
Taking Zidane to the park has a really positive impact on his health. I have high hopes for Zidane. He was smart and lively from a very young age. I hope his asthma can be cured so he can run around and play with his friends again and not get tired so quickly.
Another country grappling with air pollution is Iran. With the pandemic, international sanctions, and economic hardship making everyday life a challenge, climate change is rarely top of the agenda. But in the capital Tehran, individuals are pushing and peddling for change. Riding a bike through the streets of Tehran is a potentially hazardous activity. Exhaust emission levels here are up to eight times higher than WHO's safety recommendations. The city is often smothered in smog. Thirty-seven-year-old El Noz Nozeri wants to change this. She studied abroad and now runs a café in Tehran. She recently joined a group of young people who call themselves "Green Clubs". Their goal is to make the city greener.
The bigger problem is that we don't see the potential alternatives. We think that because Tehran has a lot of traffic and has a lot of pollution, it's impossible to ride a bicycle or to walk or to run. But the fact is that we're running to reduce that pollution.
El Noz Nozeri's café is a meeting point for a small, dedicated cycling community. Twice a week, the group offers free repair services and coffee. Many of the cyclists are women. Though they're not expressly prohibited from riding bicycles, a lot of hardliners continue to insist that it's un-Islamic. But according to these women, a lot of Iranians see it differently.
Most of the reactions I get when people see me biking are positive. A lot of people encourage me, especially women. They clapped me from their car windows, honked loudly, and called out, "Mashallah, how great!"
For El Noz Nozeri, cycling presented a business opportunity. During the pandemic, she started selling sourdough bread. This allowed her to continue earning money during the lockdown. Initially, one of the biggest challenges was handling deliveries. She asked a few of her cyclists, and soon she had a small fleet of volunteer food couriers.
It's been very great. We started with four cyclists about two months ago. Now the club is close to 100. It's great.
One of the cyclists is photographer Chantin. Every week, he takes an afternoon off so he can take part.
Up until now, we haven't had the infrastructure for biking. Thanks to our efforts, we can hopefully make officials aware of the fact that there are people like us out there. Maybe then, they'll build bike lanes all over the city.
And off they go. Chantin and his friend Mohammed are heading to Tahrirish, a neighborhood in the north of the city. Bike lanes are still quite rare here as well. The leader of the pack is Peruz Hanachi, the mayor of Tehran since 2018. Though he only cycles with male colleagues, he's regarded as a reform-oriented politician. Every Tuesday, he rides with them as part of an event known as Car Free Tuesday.
For years in Tehran, we've thought only of cars. We've built roads purely for automobiles, which effectively only encourages people to drive them. It's time for us to rethink things and create more public space for bikes and pedestrians.
His goal is that within the next five years, cyclists will make up 5% of the traffic in Tehran. Currently, it's less than 1%. Chantin has reached his first customer of the day. Alvides says she uses the green delivery service once a week.
It avoids my traffic, time-consuming traffic in Tehran. I make new acquaintances. I love having tea with all the people that come here.
As volunteers, Chantin and Mohammed make time for tea. For the time being, customers don't have to pay for their service.
I really like doing it because I like contributing to my city's development. It's good that more people ride bikes, but also that companies are supporting our movement.
For El Noz Nozeri, the scheme is more of a movement than a profit-making venture. Like many other food service workers during the pandemic, she's had to fight to survive. But she still stands by her project.
If I were to ever leave Iran or if I were to ever leave this business, I wanted something more than just the walls and the food and the name to stay behind me. I wanted to start a movement, something to be remembered and something that could be continued with or without me.
Her goal is to reach as many people as possible. She believes that's the only way the movement will have a real chance in Iran. In other parts of the world, cycling is a lot more straightforward with high-quality lanes shielding riders from the surrounding traffic. Given conditions of this kind, a lot of people will willingly leave their cars at home in the German city of Münster, while over a third of commuters get from A to B by bike. Making cycling attractive is also the key goal of an initiative underway in the city of Belo Horizonte in southeastern Brazil. For a country designed with cars in mind, it's an especially significant move. For this week's Global Ideas, our reporter Bianca Kopch went to find out more. Plastic packaging is lightweight, cheap, and practical. According to the UN, some 400,000 tons of it are produced every year. Much of it is used just once before being tossed in the trash. The pandemic has only exacerbated the problem with disposable masks, gloves, and other medical waste polluting the environment. We find out how people in Ghana are tackling the issue. This beach to the east of Ghana's capital Accra is drowning in plastic trash. Richmond Quarko and his friends are out collecting it, while aware that in a couple of weeks it'll be just as bad again.
We deserve more than to be a dump site. This is our little paradise. We prefer to keep it as it is, and we believe that with collective action and responsibility, the world should move towards alternative packaging solutions.
They've carried out over 1,000 sweeps altogether in their battle against the global plastic tsunami. They pick up everything from Aldi supermarket bags to fishing nets. Now even waste from the COVID-19 pandemic is washing ashore.
We do find some medical things which, of course, came out from the outbreak of the pandemic. These are new streams of waste. It would be great for most people to use reusable masks to reduce this because the single-use mask is really becoming another pandemic in the pandemic.
The activists get modest financial support from a variety of organizations, even the EU. They're alarmed especially by a series of new studies which say that over the next 20 years, the amount of plastic in the world's oceans will double to a total 600 million tons. The maritime plastic deluge has taken on a life of its own. Dr. Edem Mahou of Accra University is studying the damage done to the ocean. It takes hundreds or even thousands of years for plastic to decompose. It gradually breaks up into ever smaller parts. The smallest of them, the nanoparticles now found in fish, are a huge problem for Ghanaians.
Plastics are made with additives, salates and other chemicals. These plastics get in the fish and then we consume the fish. And then what happens? We end up consuming these chemicals into our own bodies. It's a big challenge, not just for the ocean and the ecosystem, but also for humans.
One more reason for Ghana to press ahead with recycling. Plastic manufacturer MiniPlast has grown to be one of the country's most important plastic suppliers. It produces two types of plastic: plastic made from fresh materials and recycled plastics.
It's something that came out of necessity. The cost of raw material was expensive. We found out ways of recycling the material. We're talking about almost 20 years ago when recycling in Ghana was very little. We have 50% of our production is made out of recycled material. And we also produce and sell to other factories. But not only that, is that we believe that in the next 10 years there will not be a single drop of virgin material.
Recycling trash means revenues for the company and jobs for its workers. The tasks of collecting and processing plastics provide a valuable opportunity to earn an income in a country where jobs can be hard to come by. After the plastic has been segregated by type and color, it's processed into a molten mass which is converted into granulated plastic. The approach has many benefits.
Recycling creates lots of jobs and that pay well. This is something that is very needed here. We have developed three plants that collect, for us, shred and recycle. And those are fed by smaller plants to whom we give always trainings and financial help through ourselves and sometimes through GIZ from your country and other organizations.
MiniPlast is especially environmentally conscientious, getting 2/3 of its power from the sun. However, where the beach meets the city of Accra, the activists from Plastic Punch say recycling is good, but waste prevention is better. So they also want people to think about how they live.
The community might change their mindset on how they see or handle these items in their daily lives. So that is the essence, to give some form of hope that we are messing it up and we deserve to make it better for the next generations. This is the message we are sending over.
Waste prevention and recycling, it'll take both to tackle climate change and not only in Ghana. That's all from us at Global 3000 this week. Don't forget to write to us at global3000@dw.com. Until next time, take care.
I Still Believe in Our City. It really is a statement that I'm putting up with these guardians who are strong and resilient and hopeful in the face of these horrible attacks against our community. It is a public art series created in partnership with the New York City Commission on Human Rights to address the anti-Asian bias and hate crimes that have been on the rise as of late. I'm Amanda Ping-Podibakia. I'm a Brooklyn-based multidisciplinary artist, and my work makes the invisible visible. Today, we're in the financial district installing these new panels for I Still Believe in Our City. We see these figures depicted larger than life. And what they do is they lift us up. They hold our community and they say, despite what we've been through as Asian-Americans and as New Yorkers, we're still here fighting every day for our shared future. You know, I think what's great is that everybody who passes by, these women, can see a little bit of themselves.
We all have stories from our youth of being subjected to various forms of Asian-American racism. We've also seen in the past year kind of powerful movements, like the Black Lives Matter movement, where we've been in solidarity and in coalition with different communities throughout the city to fight against anti-black racism. Now we're talking about anti-Asian racism. New York City, because of its diversity, I think is a city where we want our different communities to be standing up for each other in solidarity.
Physical attacks and verbal assaults against people of Asian descent around the world has increased during the COVID-19 pandemic. The United Nations, since its beginning, has fought against racism and racial discrimination, specifically with Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The United Nations Office for the High Commissioner for Human Rights is fighting against racism, discrimination, xenophobia, and fighting for minorities and indigenous peoples as well.
Now we are in my installation called "May We Know Our Own Strengths". This installation is a second body of work that I'm developing in partnership with the New York City Commission on Human Rights. It was inspired by a watershed moment of AAPI youth sharing their stories of sexual assault and gender-based violence. In this installation, I invite all New Yorkers, actually, anyone, anywhere, to submit through an online portal, mayweno.nyc, their stories, their sins, secrets, and suffering. And I will take with this... And I will take this pooling mass of anger and loss and grief and pain and weave it into hanging paper sculptures into this space. This is a message received yesterday. "I am a survivor of sexual abuse. My older male cousin molested me when I was 12. What makes this even more complicated is that he is from the AAPI side of my family. So I often find myself struggling to accept that the source of my connection to this beautiful community also contains my greatest wound." I think this submission is so powerful because, you know, like healing from trauma, there's such a mix of pain and grief, but also hope. Art can be such a powerful way to access your own humanity. I think we see atrocious human rights violations happen because folks have shut the door on their own humanity. Art can really be a way to bring your humanity back home.
Dear world leaders, the coronavirus is still spreading, producing new variants that put us all at risk. For children, this means more school closures, economic insecurity, and worse healthcare. This pandemic won't be over anywhere until it's over everywhere. But right now, low-income countries don't have enough vaccines. Yet by August, G7 countries will have enough doses to donate 20% of their vaccines. That's over 150 million doses and still stay on track to vaccinate their adult population. We can and must get vaccines to every country fast. If we don't, we risk extending the pandemic and setting back decades of progress against extreme poverty, malnutrition, vaccine-preventable deaths, and unequal opportunity for girls. Girls have been especially affected by lockdowns and school closures. To help them recover, G7 leaders must also endorse commitments to get 40 million more girls in school and 20 million more girls reading by age 10 by 2026. With children's lives, rights, and futures in the balance, you must agree to actions that will end this pandemic for good and build a future where all children are happy, healthy, and protected. Donate doses now. Endorse the Girls Education Declaration.
This week, the COVAX facility will deliver its 65,000th vaccine. It should have been its 170,000th. By the end of June, that shortfall will reach 190 million doses. The COVID-19 pandemic is far from over. Successfully vaccinating one country does not end a global pandemic. And the clearest path out is to get vaccines to every country. But some countries still do not have enough vaccines. And the virus continues to spread and to mutate. Health systems are struggling and we are facing limited production capacity and lack of funding. This threatens us all. We need countries with excess doses to donate those doses now. As G7 leaders meet next month, we urge them to pool excess supplies and support our call to expand manufacturing capacity globally, including through the proactive partnering and transfer of both intellectual property and technology. By sharing doses, supplies, intellectual property, and technology, we can get closer to stopping the spread in every country and ending this pandemic for everyone.
This is our schedule for all of the 10 weeks and what you'll be learning. Around week three, we'll start practicing with resumes and basic interviews.
Je suis Muriel Durandis, je viens d'Haïti. Je suis rentrée aux États-Unis il n'y a pas longtemps. Lorsque je vivais en Haïti, j'ai été à l'école, ok? Je suis chef, ok, en Haïti. Mais comme vous savez, lorsqu'on a un grand rêve, c'est moi, je veux être un master chef.
This is how we learn here at Emma's Torch. We give you all of the tools so that you can get the practice.
Emma's Torch provides culinary training and job placement services for refugees, asylees, and survivors of human trafficking. We provide culinary training and we also help them begin real careers as they adjust to being new members of our community. I founded Emma's Torch. The idea began to percolate in my head when I was working at a human rights organization in Washington, D.C. and volunteering at a local homeless shelter. And I thought to myself, there's got to be something more that we can be doing with food and using it as a tool of empowerment. And at the same time, I was really interested in the refugee crisis. In particular, the photo of Alan Kurti, that three-year-old little boy whose body was found washed up on the shores, spoke to me. And it, to me, was a moment of reckoning. We had to do something.
Je suis vraiment excitée, vraiment contente. J'ai tellement rêvé de devenir à Emma Touch. Après dix semaines de ce programme, j'aimerais bien être graduée et avoir un beau travail, ok, dans un restaurant superbe comme Emma Touch.
What I want you to do last is you are going to small dice.
Small dice.
Eight pieces.
Eight pieces.
Of the Serrano chili.
Serrano chili. This is my nine weeks in Emma Touch and I learned a lot of things, like prep cook, knife skill, espresso skill, line cook, everything. One chocolate cookie. Ok, anything to drink? Oh, that's it? Okay. Before, I was very timid. Very nice people in Emma Touch. They trained me and they make me very, very confident. Have a nice day. Thank you. Now I could speak English a lot of very good, I can say.
So excited to present to you your diploma, Muriel, on completing 10 weeks of the Emma's Torch culinary training program. So here you go. We are so proud of you and can't wait to see what you do next as you begin your career as a chef.
Thank you. For my graduation, I will be work with my uncle. He got a Haitian restaurant at Manhattan. I will be a line cook chef and make a lot of money.
Their has ability to believe in themselves, to be resilient and learn, are all tightly bound by these connections. As parents, our own mental health is so importantly bound by these connections. As parents, our own mental health is so important for building these connections. It's never been an easy job and the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in parents and caregivers carrying an even heavier mental load as they battle to keep children learning and their families functioning. Self-care is important, but it's not enough. Parents need support and we need to care for each other. That's why with UNICEF, I want to thank and support parents and caregivers in doing the most important and hardest job in the world.
Covid-19 coronavirus, is it that we are studying? Our study is online, but there are a lot of students who study online, but it doesn't happen. It's happened once and it's not happened again. The poor people, whose system of food is cooked every day, their COVID-19 situation has been locked down. Because of that, their condition of illness has worsened. Their food is not given enough. Because of that, they are sick and their lives are at risk. Their neighbors and neighbors want to help them, but they can't do it. Because of that, the situation of the poor people is like that. Poor people are being helped. Lockdown, because of that, everyone's work is closed. But we need to do something to make them not hungry and die. As we all know, the coronavirus has invaded our country a year ago. Because until now, it seems like the virus is over. But no, the virus is still spreading strongly. Before lockdown, we had already been locked down. And now we have been locked down again. Even though I and my whole family wear masks, sanitizers use sanitizer, hot water, soup, tea, we add soy and serve it to our community so that our immunity remains. Last lockdown, our condition of illness was very bad. And now we don't want to see another day. Because that day was very difficult, very difficult day. But in that lockdown, we encountered a lot of situations. And UNICEF has given us and many children some sanitary gloves and masks. Which I use often. I want to advise you all that you all wear masks, use sanitizer, dirty hands wash every time. And whatever laws or regulations the government gives, follow them.
This year, our study will be finished. It's not done again. I have doubts about it. If we have the same desire to study next year, it will be a vacancy.